I wasn't on council.
There you were. When I got, when I got, um, voted and appointed. It was so memorable. It was so memorable. It was like, it was like, yeah. Oh, yeah, I do remember that. I brought my dog. Aren't you about the outdoor, or we're talking about the outdoor meeting? I liked that.
All right. It is. November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, six thirty P M. And at this time, I would like to call city council meeting to order. We'll start by having pledge allegiance, excuse me, pledge of allegiance. An invocation will be given by Sixth Ward Councilmember Big Will Fordgrave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just ask that everybody take a moment of silence to, um, to pray or reflect or meditate on anything, uh, if they see fit. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you will, with the roll call, please.
Mayor Daniel Mahoney.
Present.
Vice Mayor Arlene Robinson.
Present.
Second Ward Councilmember Freddie Dancy.
Go Blue.
Third Ward Councilmember Angelita Gunn.
Present.
Fourth Ward Councilmember Laura Dryer Schlecki.
Here.
Fifth Ward Councilmember Karen Benel.
Here.
Sixth Ward Councilmember Will Fordgrave.
Here.
All right, we are all present and accounted for. Uh, brings us down to item number four, adoption of the agenda, looking for a motion to support.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, we have an agenda. The next item number five, we have no presentations or proclamations, which will bring us down to item number six, public hearing. This time, looking for a motion to support to open a public hearing and, uh, the resolution on determining the necessity for street resurfacing on Wisner Street from Wildwood to, um, excuse me, Wildwood Avenue to Ga- Ganson Street.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, I have no slips for this public hearing. Uh, but welcome anybody who's interested to have comments on this public hearing. Going once. Going twice. Going three times. Counsel, any comments, questions, concerns from you guys?
After what happened at the last meeting, I just want to make doubly sure that the people that are along these stretches of road that we're going to be talking about did get the, the mail, what's going on. All right, so it wasn't returned to sender at least.
I, I too was gonna ask similar question. We published this for the twenty-fifth of October. Did we have to, um, repost this?
Yes, we, we reposted it in the, we reposted it in the SIT PAT and we sent out notices to the affected parcels a second time.
Okay.
To notify them of the hearing tonight. And it was al- also posted on the front door of the building.
Okay.
Okay, seeing or hearing none, no further questions. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to support to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. And at this time, we would, uh, do we need to take a motion on the resolution? Yes, okay, so at this time, we'd, um, accept a motion to support on the resolution ordering the construction and preparation of the special, special assessment role.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, brings us down to item B, looking for a motion to support to open a public hearing and resolution determining the necessity for street resurfacing on Wildwood Avenue from West Avenue to Stewart Avenue.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, public hearing is open, same invitation. If you could, sir, uh, just state your name and address for us.
John Ledex, six twelve Wildwood.
Thank you.
So, uh, the question I have is how much is this gonna run, uh, or is this coming out of our taxes, which I think is probably where it should be coming out at break? Our property taxes that we pay? Are we getting assessed extra money on top of that, is my question?
I'll allow staff to answer that question in detail for you.
Yes, this would be a property assessment for the construction of the street. How much? John, do you have a sense of that?
Not yet.
Not yet, until we get bids.
Okay, this is the first step in it. This is what coun- what we're asking council to do is to prepare a construction plan and then have all that looked at and then come back to have a special assessment role approved. At that point, before that point, you will know what those costs are.
Well, I understand that. I mean, first of all, I'm a little bit confused as to why my income taxes and property taxes aren't covering my streets, which is what we're supposed to be doing. Secondly, beyond that, we're kind of being asked tonight to be okay with something that you're not gonna give us a number with.
We're asking you to be okay with starting the process so we don't end up going too far down the road.
Are we having a second process then where you go, here's the real number, do you want us to do it?
Exactly.
Okay.
And then also, so it might take words out of Councilman Fordgrave's mouth, there is an opportunity for residents on the street to petition to have the project not go forward. And the assessor can help you with that and how that process works.
Okay, all right, I, I'm just, like I said, I'm, I'm curious as to what, if we're paying taxes, I know they go to a lot of things. But what's supposed to, supposed to happen, gas tax even is supposed to go to roads, all this kind of stuff's supposed to go to roads. I shouldn't have to spend another nine hundred dollars or whatever uh, on a fixed income to pay for roads that the city's supposed to take care of. My, my understanding is you work in the city of Jackson and you live in the city of Jackson, you pay one percent income tax, is that correct? I don't even make a dime in this town. I live here, but I still pay a full, pay a full percent. So I'm paying my fair share and then some to be asked to pay more for a street that should be fixed. Out of these taxes is, is a bit asking a bit much in this time, specifically. So, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Any other comment on this public hearing? Okay, clerk has a couple of comments to read for us.
Steve Anderson of six eleven Wildwood. Resurfacing again, believe it was done about ten years ago. It cost my office about thirty-five hundred dollars. Jackson High paid zero of it. Will they pay this time? The smoother the street, the faster the kids drive on it. With the recession just around the corner, I feel patching it for a couple more years might make more sense. Cheryl Coletti, five seventeen Wildwood. I just received the notice on the meeting on ten twenty-five twenty-two and because it was too late to send a letter, I am sending an email. My property is located at five seventeen Wildwood Ave. I retired last November and I'm getting the office ready to sell. I paid a special assessment many years ago to repave and create new parking spaces for the school. However, the people continue to use my parking lot to pick up students. Now you're asking for more money to resurface the road. I must oppose this project as it will be a hardship on me to pay more in taxes since I am on a fixed income. Also, several houses were taken down this summer, so there are less businesses to take up the tax burden. I ask that council, I ask council to oppose this resurfacing project at this time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, is there any questions from you guys, questions or comments on the project?
When they, when they send out the information to the property owners as to how much their, they would be charged, do they include what everyone on that street's gonna pay?
No, it's just what that individual would be being paid.
Could we include it so that they can see that the school's paying their share, that, uh, uh, the vacant property is in fact paying their share uh, just because there's no house on it, so on and so forth, that the city picks up its share of property? Is that possible?
I, I, certainly possible. The school's not going to pay their share though. The school is exempt from special assessments.
Okay, but is it, is it, is their portion uh, calculated into the amount that the other property owners pick up?
So it's the total front footage that's calculated per each property. So if there is an exempt entity on there, then the, the, uh, city would eat that cost.
The city, okay. And so I think it would be very, a good thing so that the property owners along there understand that they're not picking up the school's portion. Um, or that if there's another, a church on that portion, I can't, I can't think of who's on there right now, that the church is actually paying their portion of the assessment? Or that Carl Shillian's paying his portion because of the vacant land that he owns on there? Um, or if it's a business, do they pay a little, businesses pay more than a residential? Is that right? Or am I thinking of something else?
So our current policy, um, i- is very complex. And so there are going to be varied assessments for each property uh, that would likely inundate, uh, my office with phone calls to try and explain each and every one of those assessments. Um, so I, I would say that although it may be beneficial for some of those taxpayers to understand who all is paying and how much, um, that I think that it would, it would serve everyone best for a simpler special assessment policy before we move forward with your suggestion.
A quick question to follow up with that, does it, when, um, parcel owners get the notice, does it, in, in, in turn with what their amount is, does it give the total project cost as well? Because maybe if we didn't just do individual parcel owners on that street, if it at least would show the total amount so they can see in terms of the actual scale of the project, what they're paying.
So, so the, the estimated amount of special assessments, uh, does go out on the hearing of necessity, uh, but not the total amount of project cost on the hearing of confirmation. So, uh, certainly putting in the total amount being spread on special assessment would be a fairly simple move.
I have one other question. I, I think this was repaved or something was done on Wildwood when I was first selected in uh, eleven, so twelve, I would say. Is that when this road was, something was done on this road last? Whoever has the answer?
The assessor does not have that answer.
You got a nice full beard going on there though, so. Is he looking it up?
It was two thousand and six. Okay, in two thousand and six is when, um, Wildwood was reconstructed. It was crack sealed in twenty seventeen.
Okay. So two thousand and six, this is twenty-two, so what is that, sixteen years? And this is a, this is a con- re- constructor, is this a mill down and repaved?
This is just a mill and resurfacing.
Is there something that we can be doing to make the total reconstructs, uh, last longer than sixteen years? Because they did pay assessments then for ten years, I assume. And if I, I wouldn't, would hope that our roads would last longer than sixteen years.
Actually, for mill and resurface is about the proper time when you should be doing them.
Okay.
Just as a maintenance, this is just a single, um, overlay. In the engineer's report that came to you, the total project cost for this is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is the water infrastructure underneath it all a concern or is that done?
That's been replaced.
Right, okay.
Any other questions, counsel?
If you, I have one more, since it's a, sorry. Since it was a reconstruct in sixteen years ago and you're doing a mill and, um, will this last longer than, because don't the mill and cap or whatever you want to call it, um, last about ten years? How long does it last roughly?
In the range of about ten to twelve years, yes.
So will it last longer because it was a total reconstruct sixteen years ago?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for indulging me.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we'll take a motion to support to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. And we will be looking for a motion in support, uh, to move the resolution for ordering the construction and preparation for the assess- special assessment role.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right. Brings us down to item C, looking for a motion to support for a public hearing and resolution determining the necessity for street reconstruction and water and sewer main replacement on Pearl Street from Cooper Street to Waterloo Ave.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. And we will welcome the first call for public comment on this hearing. How you doing, sir? If you could, just state your name and address for us, please.
My name's Larry Phillipsak and the address is six fifteen East Pearl. And, um, I, I understand that we've got some amount of money coming out of the EPA, um, Clean Water Fund. And based on assessments that I have at home, I understand that like a certain percentage of all road repairs and replacements are covered by the, uh, federal funds, right? Um, I'm trying to put my building back together after a fire from consumers, so I'm a little bit concerned at the, uh, because I don't have any income in this, in this property right now. I'm a little concerned about the severity of the, uh, assessment on that property. And am I gonna have to do it again when, um, when you do, uh, Van Dorn? Because that's the next street that's gonna be that, um, is probably gonna get hit. Do we have an answer on that? Are we gonna do Van Dorn too? Next, is that gonna be the next part of the project? And how much of this, how much of this federal, of the road itself is gonna be covered by the federal monies?
So the breakdown of the project, I can fill in here, so the total project cost is five million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. So the street construction assessments are estimated, it's all estimated, to be three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four. Major street funds, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, change. Water funds, one point eight million, sewer funds, one point one million, and then EPA money grant we received, one point seven million.
Are we getting any of that? So is the reimbursement coming out of the, for the, the road surfacing itself coming from, uh, federal government monies or is it from local monies? Because I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the, the impact of that three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars on the assessment for businesses that are down that street. Because that's gonna be pretty big. It's not a lo- that's not a long area.
No, I understand your question.
I think his question is around how much, are you really asking like how much to expect?
Your portion to be correct.
In a roundabout way, but yeah, I mean, because usually, usually most projects have a lot of, a lot of federal funding in them of late. You know, so if it's, there is, do we have a breakdown per business or anything like that in that area?
So, um, first I'd like to answer the one question you had on if, if they did, so your property, it sounds like your property's on a corner.
Yeah.
And so if they do a, a, a street that your property abuts, then you would be subject to a, a second special assessment, uh, given the variables of the current policy. Um, what we're here for tonight, though, is for the engineer to give me the information to start to spread it once they receive big costs. So we don't have an, a, a size of an assessment for you today.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, if you could just state your name and your address for us, please.
Uh, Luke Klotz, five hundred East Pearl. So I guess on the previous challenge, I, I really didn't get an answer what we're looking for. What's this gonna cost the business owners on this five point seven million dollars? What's our tale? So the rest of the, the rest of the, uh, funds are federally granted money? So, uh, we're just responsible for the three hundred and thirty-nine thousand?
Correct.
Well, the EPA is the federal, the rest of it is all local funds.
But to his point, the citizens' portion, the property's portion is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand estimated divided by
I, I get that, I get all that.
So like everything else is coming out of our existing water and sewer funds.
Okay, that's my question.
And the EPA.
Okay, that's right, thank you.
Any other public comments? Counsel, any comments or questions from you guys? Okay, seeing or hearing none, at this time, we will accept a motion to support to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All right, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, and at this time, we'll be looking for a motion to support to move the resolution ordering the construction and preparation on the special assessment role.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Right. That brings us down to citizens' comment. We'll start by reading rules for citizens' comment. Number one, each speaker is limited up to three minutes during this, uh, during the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Two, during public, um, that's not correct, during, uh, city councilman at the timeline, and this is not the right one, sorry. No, it's not. Okay, uh, number two, each speaker is limited up to three minutes during the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Council members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Number three, each speaker should be polite and courteous to the council and members of the public in attendance, while any speaker is free to express his or her opinion on any subject, no speaker may direct personal attacks or at any member of the staff or council unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties. Use obscene, obscene language while addressing the city council or engage in disruptive or disorderly behavior during a council meeting. Number four, should any speaker cause a breach of the peace through their conduct, the mayor may declare the speaker out of order. If a speaker is declared out of order, the mayor may, uh, excuse me, and by the mayor, and refuses to cease and desist from disruptive or disorderly conduct, the mayor may order the person removed from the meeting. Number six, each speaker may speak once under public comment and may not yield their time to others. Mr. Peter Bormuth.
Peter Bormuth, one forty-two West Pearl Street. Um, I'd just like to thank everybody who voted in the election. Uh, particularly, I'd like to thank all those young voters, uh, Generation Z. Uh, basically, the young women made the difference, uh, nationwide for the Democratic Party. Obviously, abortion was a major issue and I really want to thank all those voters who came out. Um, I wanted to just say a few words about inflation. I keep hearing people um, talk about inflation and suggest that it is a government issue or a government problem. Uh, it is a government problem, but it's not being caused by the government. I want to give you the oil company profits for the third quarter. ExxonMobil, nineteen point seven billion dollars. Shell, nine point five billion dollars. Chevron, eleven point two billion dollars. British Petroleum, eight point two billion dollars. And Saudi Armco, forty-two point four billion dollars. This is where all your inflation comes from. The price of petroleum is reflected in the price of everything, you know, transportation, shipping, plastics, growing crops, food costs. So I just want everybody to understand that the problem is with corporate greed, a monopoly. And the things that the government can do about it are limited. Um, but I do recall that there was a president called Nixon who put wage and price controls on the economy. He got impeached for that. Um, there was a president called Kennedy who, um, did the same thing. He got shot for that. So, um, it's no wonder that all the Republicans who complaining about inflation and blaming it on President Biden, you know, you all elected representatives and senators and people who wouldn't consider a windfall tax on the oil companies, which is exactly what is needed. But I don't see the political will in Washington to do it. So I just want everybody to know why we have inflation. Thank you.
John C. King.
Many residents in Venezuela probably disagree with that previous comment. John King, two zero three Third Street here in the city. Several on the Democrat Party in the state of New York, like the Democratic Congressional Campaign Committee Chair Sean Patrick Maloney, who lost his race, are complaining about how their paro- party handled things in this November selection, just like several of the republic- in the Republican Party here in Michigan are complaining. Funny thing about that is major reasons Republicans didn't do well in Michigan is there was so much money that came from out of the state to support Democrats, especially from the state of New York. Lot of money that supported Democrat candidates across the country came from the CEO of F T X Crypto, who apparently has run a scam with that company, which now after the election is going belly up. Fortunately, it is now being reported by several news sources, the Republican Party has flipped the U S House. Maybe now the country will start getting the truth about so many things. One thing we didn't get the truth on was the attack on Paul Pelosi, the husband of the U S uh, Hou- House Speaker. The mainstream media reported that as being an attack, that it was an attack by a Trump supporter ma- MAGA maniac. What they didn't report was the, the truth that the individual lived in a bus with a B L M sign on the back and a gay pride flag planted in front of it. That's the media, true enemy. It may have been this October surprise followed by former President Trump announcing he would be making a big announcement that may have stopped the Republicans searching in the polls before the election and swayed independents to break for the Democrat Party. Following the election last week, our Sixth Ward Councilmember stated on his public official page in regards to the people who saw the polling location and the voting, "That's what makes this country great." I replied, "No, Junior, what made this country great is people with certain values who made sacrifices that gave you and others the right to vote. Your lack of gratitude and woke baloney are the biggest threats to this country." Some of his woke baloney went on in the last city council meeting with his questioning of the police chief about E V ve- police vehicles. He wasn't so much concerned about the people's safety. The woke politics and former President Trump's got him up in arms in voting for a current dementia-stricken president. Elections have consequences and the consequences of his getting his way was thirteen service members getting killed in the Afghanistan surrender debacle, followed by the Biden administration's wagging the dog moment in which several innocent kids were killed by the Biden- in which several innocent kids were killed by the Biden administration, or a young child being killed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I think that concludes our public comments. Don't see any petitions or commu- uh, communication from city staff and other governmental ish, uh, governmental entities. That brings us down to item number nine, the consent calendar. Looking for a motion of support under consent.
So moved.
Support.
I'd like to, uh.
It's been, sorry, it's been moved and supported.
I would like.
Discussion.
Yep, I'd like to pull item H for separate consideration.
I'll support that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, that passes, brings us to item H, looking for a motion of support for a resolution for twenty twenty-three city council meeting dates.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion.
I would like to amend the motion to have only one meeting date in February, on February twenty-first, instead of the two that are proposed.
Can I ask why?
Yes, you can. Um, because I planned my vacation based on what our typical dates are, which is the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. And, uh, I've already got to miss one council meeting and planned it specifically around dates, and we had to plan, uh, in advance. And I cannot, I asked my husband if I could change my dates. And with, um, well, I'm already missing one. Um, and with how efficient Jonathan's been with his agendas, they've been pretty late on topics. I discussed it with.
Until we take a month with, with only one meeting.
Uh, well, I did discuss it with Jonathan, and he, he, huh? Yeah, he's, yes, but, um, or we could go to two, uh, February fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Is there a certain number of meetings that we're required to hold during the calendar year?
The city charter requires one meeting minimum per month.
Thank you.
You know, uh. I don't have no problem. I see we meet on the twenty-fourth. Two months to move it, that changed the dates. You know, I'm just.
Fourteenth is, uh.
Valentine's Day. Swedish Day, baby. I know.
Well, that's why I suggested the twenty-first.
The twenty-first is on the calendar.
Huh?
The twenty-first is on the calendar. February twenty-first is on the calendar.
Oh, I understand, uh, but, like, I, if you wanted to do just one in February, I suggested the twenty-first, or we could do two, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. The seventh is what I'm trying to a- avoid.
We end up meeting the twentieth, we'd be meeting once a week.
Either way, either, either way, we, we would be meeting once a week.
Oh, the only way you don't meet once a week is if you change March to the fourteenth and twenty-eighth. But I asked Jonathan, who has children, about spring break, and he said spring break was that last week in March. Right, but I don't have children, so I wouldn't know. I have children, but they're all adults, so I wouldn't know, know when spring break is.
He's homesteaded.
Um, we, we take a lot of things into consideration and making sure people are gonna be around this one. And not to say that staff is more important than council members, but when we looked at this, we peckered. I can say, I can say we editorial, we, these guys.
And again, Jonathan's agendas have been pretty concise, so.
I just think it's kind of difficult to tell this far in advance what's gonna be on the agenda. Um, I, we've got three months in the, in the calendar already where we reduce. And this is just my, just my comment on the, on discussion. Uh, we've got three meetings already that are three months, June, July, August consecutive, where we only meet once a month. I, I'd like to keep it the same personally, 'cause I don't want to meet two weeks in a row. I'd like to keep it the same. That's just my recommendation, so. But there's a, there's a motion on the floor where you making a motion to.
Amend.
Amend the motion. So, there's a recommendation for amendment on the floor. So it sounds like that recommendation dies for lack of second, and the original motion is back on the floor. Any discussion on the original motion? Okay, seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. That brings us. We have no other business to discuss tonight. Uh, brings us now to new business, item A. Looking for a motion of support for the approval of professional engineering services contract with Fishbeck for the design phase of the drinking water state revolving fund project at the water treatment plant in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand dollars.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Brings us down to item B, uh, looking for a motion of support, uh, to amend the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget to reflect the additional revenue and expenditures, uh, associated with the Byron Jag Grant.
So moved. Support.
Bren Jag Grant, Ja- Jag Grant, sorry. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item?
Um, I just have a question. That, is that what I see now on High Street, those polls with the?
Yes, there's two, one on, um, high east of MLK and one on high west of MLK. Those are two of the ten total that are up.
So there's eight more somewhere?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. What equipment are we purchasing?
Ours is the twenty-five, and I don't have these numbers, 'cause this already came once for approval. This is just to amend the budget. Roughly twenty-five thousand for the, the cameras. And the, the other piece of equipment that we are purchasing is a, it's basically a three-D crime scene, um, instrument to, to photograph crime scenes. And then the additional money is actually the county sheriff's office.
So ours is the fifty-two hundred and ten dollars?
I'm sorry?
Ours is five thousand two hundred and ten dollars for that three-D piece of equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, brings us down to item C, looking for a motion of support on balancing the change order one to the Martin Luther King Equality Trail Lighting Improvement Contract with Cochran Electric Company.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Looking for a motion of support on item D, balancing order eight to the Clinton Street and Glick Highway Construction Contract with Bailey Escavating.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Brings us down to E, delinquent invoices, looking for a motion of support to approve a resolution to place delinquent invoices on the twenty twenty-two winter tax bills.
I'll make a motion to move the delinquent invoices and put them on the twenty twenty-two winter tax bill, excluding several. First one would be uh, Big Fish Holding and Direction Holding LLC. Next ones would be the Cannon Estate, comma, James. And there's a couple of variations of that. There equals one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I think. Seven. And the next one would be, uh, the James W. Maderi.
Can I ask why?
Yes.
Oh, does she need a second for us to discuss? I'll second the motion.
You seconded already?
I am now.
Okay.
Yes.
Sure, the first one is the email that we all received. Uh, big, uh, the Direction Holding LLC and the Big Fish Holding. I'd like to see us get him some documentation as to those invoices, copies of photographs, which I believe are retire, um, required. The second one, the James Cannon Estate, uh, the personal representative just passed away. And I believe the city is working with them on several issues, and I don't, I don't think this is a sign of working with them. By putting those on the tax bills, you can add them later if so, so be it happens. And then the James W. Maderi, I, um, am confused as to what the three-ten fifty-six equals. I bel- I thought it equaled what was on the website, but when I added it here, it doesn't add up. And I know that two of the bills that are on the website, or I'm sorry, one of the bills that is on the website does not involve this particular piece of property. An inoperable vehicle that was on the road does not belong to this piece of pri-. There's no evidence that it belongs to this piece of property. And I know I've talked to the city manager about it, and he was gonna have it removed. So until those are resolved, I'd like to see those pulled off the off of the delinquent invoices assessment.
So, um, I understand, I'm sorry for the loss, but, uh, I'm looking at these, these was built over a year ago. And what?
Are you talking about the Cannon ones?
I'm talking about all of them.
Well.
Williams, I'm thinking, they all was built well, well over a year ago.
Well.
No one ever paid.
So, and I don't disagree with you, but I know that the Maderi one was one that I dealt with the city manager on, and it appears that it's still on there, whether it's part of this three-ten fifty-six, it's not broken out. So I don't know the answer to that. And you can't give somebody an inoperable vehicle ticket when the prop- the vehicle's parked on the street and you don't really know whose it is. The Cannon one, uh, the city attorney would have to speak to that. I just know that there, there's a dispute on all the properties with the Cannons that they're trying to settle. And I'd hate to see this put on something as significant as a tax bill. And then I'm only going by what the email says for the other one, on Big Fish and Direction Holdings. And I suspect once those issues are answered, they can always be added to the next delinquent invoices and put on taxes.
Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The property, um, six fourteen Fourth Street, owned by James Maderi. The citation for that is garbage and debris. This does not include the vehicle at all.
So when I do the math on the garbage and debris, it doesn't add up to three-ten fifty-six?
To speak to the other ones, there's no reason to delay those at all. Those are all good fines. They were cited appropriately, notices given, opportunities to rectify, and none taken. They should stay on. If you wanted to pull Maderi so we can look at it further, go ahead. I don't think you should. Um, 'cause in these notes, prepared by, I guess, the assessing office?
The information would have been provided, uh, through finance from the individual invoicing departments.
There's no, I mean, we could hold off Maderi, but what I have in front of me says it's all garbage and debris.
Yeah, but I don't know where they're getting the three-ten fifty-six. I'm looking at the website right now. So I would have a concern that if this one's incorrect, if there's other ones, I don't know, but.
I wouldn't be so sure that this is incorrect.
If I can.
I'm not saying it is. I just said I don't know where it's coming from, 'cause I don't see those numbers on our BSNA. And I'm looking at BSNA right now.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sessler.
I know, uh, historically, there have been penalties and interests that may be added to these that may not be reflected uh, or updated on the website, so that may be where your, your math is different than what's being special, uh, that what's being levied.
So if I hit pay now, I'm gonna pay a different amount than what shows me on this page right now?
That's a, a great question for, uh, the finance department in regards to what was presented to, uh, the assessor's office and what's being illustrated on the website. So I'm not sure where that website number is, uh, being derived from, so that's a question we would want to get from finance.
So, just a, a quick question for staff. Once this is passed, is there an opportunity for the citizen who owns this property, uh, to investigate this further on their own?
There, there is, there is always an opportunity to do a corrective resolution, to remove an invoice.
Okay, Council, is there any other discussion you guys want to have on the, on the res- uh, on the motion that's on the floor?
How significant is, is the difference that you're coming up with than what's listed here?
Um, the, the what's on the website for the six fourteen Fourth is actually three dollars more than what's on here. So, bank error in James Maderi's favor.
I showed two ninety-three sixty-two.
That's one of them. He's got multiple.
No, I, that's adding them together.
Um, so I have.
One twenty-one, one twenty-one fifty times two.
I'm look, I'm looking at an invoice, DPW miscellaneous lienable. Um, invoice date of eight-five-twenty-one, three, three hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
Are you under building department or?
I'm under invoices. There's also one from March twenty-twenty-two for two hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Maybe that's the. How come they don't show up? How come they don't show up in, how come they don't show up in the building department?
It's.
If I go to invoices.
Is there, is there any other questions on the, on the motion that's on the floor?
Can I make a motion amending the motion?
No.
Then.
Because that.
Yeah, you could.
She, no, she can make a suggestion to amend the motion.
You or to Arlene? Then can I suggest that we pass this, but have, but get more detail, I don't know if you just want more detail into the actual amounts owed? Or if we like, I don't know if that would help at all? Or postpone it, postpone those to the next meeting?
I'm comfortable postponing this Mederi one, because I have some questions about how things are added up too, but everything else is legit. I would not delay those.
The Cannon one and the.
Cannon one.
The Big Fish Direct Holdings?
Hundred percent.
So then what if we just postpone Mederi?
You know what? I will, relying on our city assessors statement that it can make a corrective resolution, I'll withdraw my motion.
I'm willing.
Okay. And I'll make a, and I do have a question though. This may be out of order. But is, I'd like to ask our city attorney about the Cannon. Does this interfere with your, what you've been dealing with?
It does not, as of probably sometime this morning, depending on whether the court has ended the order. There are no current pending motions in the Cannon Estate in the probate court. So the short answer is no. Nothing in the way of confirming this resolution would affect that estate or those proceedings.
But like, it could be, if it ended up, it could be corrected in a corrective resolution.
Like Manager Green alluded to, if there was some type of mathematical error, we could always come back, as the city assessor said, and do a corrective resolution. I don't think there'd be a need for it in this instance. I, I think the numbers are accurate, but we could go that route if need be.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept, approve the resolution and place the delinquent invoices on the 2022 winter tax bills. I support.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Right, that brings us down to Item F, looking for a motion to support on the Community Police Oversight Commission Ordinance Amendment.
So moved, second.
And any discussion on the item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Reducing the number, how, takes us down to two plus the liaison. So if that forget what area it is now, but if that commission had a vote, how do you, how do you break the tie? Does the liaison?
Well, that's a committee of the, of the commission. So that committee really wouldn't be making a vote. They'd just be making a recommendation to the big, to the big commission. So there's really no power. It's the, the committee we're talking about is investigatory in nature. So not a.
Okay. I, I was thinking that they might have to take a vote.
No, they just will present things for the big group to vote on.
Okay.
Can I just ask, what's, what's the rationale for the change?
Yeah, I'll look at Matt's. I want him to talk a lot.
Sure thing, Councilmember Gunn. Chiefly, it's to, it's to preserve the propriety of the investigation. Chief Hitt will typically take over any type of departmental investigation involving one of his officers. And so there are various statutes, including Freedom of Information Act, the Bullock, Poloiki Employee Right to Know Act, and other statutory provisions that protect the propriety of those investigations. So we don't want to get in a situation where we create a quorum and trigger a public meeting. The, to go back to something the vice, vice mayor just alluded to, the council member liaison's a non-voting member. So the two members of the committee would essentially assimilate the information, report it to the full committee. And any kind of recommendation based upon that investigation would be presented by the subcommittee and chief Hitt to the full commission. And then that all would be presented at a public hearing.
Thank you.
I did want to add also, if I could, the, at the first police oversight commission, which was held, did make the five commissioners as well as councilwoman, but now fully aware that this was going to be brought to council tonight. So they are, they are not in the dark on this at all.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, that brings us down to Item G, looking for a motion to support to request approval of the contract for purchase and installation of a new sewer televising camera system.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported in any discussion on the item. Nobody else has any questions. I've got just two quick questions. One, can you just tell us if this is a better use of dollars than to, to pay in a company? I guess that's really just the one question that I have for, for, for the use of a device like this.
Mike, I'll let you go.
Yeah, come on, Mike. Let's talk. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would say that we use it so often. I mean, it's used, I mean, in, like in here, as I said, we, we use it almost every day. So, so because it's used so often, I don't think it's cost effective. You know, to go out, pay a contractor.
That was a simple answer.
All right, any other question?
Any other questions for council? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right. And that brings us down to Item H, discussion on housing instability in the city of Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to kick this discussion off.
Yes, sir.
I typed up a pretty lengthy narrative and dropped it off at your places today. I wanted to talk about this because I feel a little stuck and would like some direction and get some guidance from council on how we can, how, what your vision of addressing homelessness in the city is. There's, we've investigated some paths and some ideas have been better than others. And, and each idea we come up with has its own unique challenges. So the first, the first potential remedy, as we, as I call them, is a temporary shelter. And it's a pretty novel product from a company called Palette. They make two structures that can house people temporarily. One is a 64 square foot unit and one is a 100 square foot unit. They're called Shelter 64 and Shelter 100. They come prefabbed. All that is required is to be set on a foundation or level surface, anchored to the ground, electrical run to them, and assembled. They have their own assembly team. They cost about $12,000 per unit just for the actual unit itself, nothing, no anchoring. Or, or if there's a uneven foundation or, or ground, anything that we would need to do to make these things level. They are not insulated. They're, they're insulated pretty well, I would say, for what they are. I shouldn't change that around. They're insulated pretty well for what they are. The model we've contemplated with the company called Palette, like I said, it has one and a half inch foam insulation. They can be shipped to us, fingers crossed, in, it would take a four-week construction period, so long as they didn't run into any hiccups with supply chains. I spoke with the, our representative from the company just before the meeting because we had a presentation, the mayor's had a presentation, I've had a presentation, there were some conflicting timelines. They also offer a model that is like a community room, and they also offer a bathroom, bathhouse model. And that bathhouse model takes a little bit longer to come. A couple issues with, with this shelter idea. The first issue we have is that in, that's almost impossible to get around. We haven't figured out a way to get around it yet. Is that it's, it's a residential structure. It's a residential unit. And the, the building codes, so bigger than the city, so it's just city ordinances that we can set aside or amend real quick. The building code requires insulation in the foundation and the walls and the ceiling greater than what this product provides. That's the hurdle that we'd have to overcome. It also requires, a residential unit also requires wash facilities, bathroom, sink, shower. These units have, would have that offsite. Say, okay, those sound like they're pretty hard to get around. Well, the workaround would be, is to have this be set up in a campground. So that's, that's the path forward would be to create a campground within the city of Jackson and install these there. The issue that we run into there is that right now our ordinances do not provide for a campground. It would take at best four months because planning commission would need to take up the issue. There could be some hiccups, some modification language, and then city council approval two times. It's an ordinance, two times plus 30 days. So on the, on the short side, it could be four months to, to allow campgrounds in the city of Jackson, and more likely up to six months. Just, that's how the way things work. If we did that, establishing and developing a campground in Michigan, you don't have local control. Like a school, those things are permitted by the state. And our sense from the people that know in our building, in the building world, are hesitant to go down that route, route because it could take up to a year to navigate the state's process to establish a campground. And when we looked at other communities that did this, there's no other community in Michigan right now, but the closest one akin to our weather and the need was Madison, Wisconsin. And they did the campground route. And they must have a different method of permitting campgrounds in Wisconsin because they were able to do it locally. So not having developed a campground ever in my life and not having the city do that, I, I don't want to say any hard and fast times, but our sense was if we went to the state to make a campground here in the city, it could take, it could take a while. I don't want to over, overpromise. I definitely don't want to underestimate how much time. I don't want to have you guys feel like I'm lying to you. But those are some of our concerns. On top of that, there are site costs. We have to run power to each unit. We have, like I said, we met with the company, we got their technical specs. These are really great. They have built-in panels in them already, outlets, and a heater, a 4,500 watt heater, and an AC unit. So they can heat and they can cool, but it takes 30 amps and 240 volts. And to make those kind of connections, we're looking at some significant costs and timelines to get the necessary equipment, that big equipment to get power to each one of these. So two, it'd be a 200 watt service. Two, excuse me, 2,000 watt service on our, traditionally in homes in the city of Jackson, you're looking at either, if it's an older home, a 60 amp service, relatively modern home, 100 amp service, and new home would be about 200 amp service. So this would be 10 times like the largest amount. Getting those panels, we've heard today that the lead time on that could be 10 to 12 months. So that could be a hurdle. So those are, that's some of the challenges we're facing. The campground route could work. It just isn't an immediate solution. Which I know if, if you're like me and you walked out of the house today at any point or at work, realize it is, is cold. So this solution doesn't quite fit what we are looking for right now, but it is definitely a solution. The other path that I started to go down was looking at existing structures. And surveyed the city, talked to some people about what's available, and TA Wilson kept coming up. TA Wilson Academy, currently owned by JPS. Had a chance to tour the, the facility with Superintendent Jeff Beal, who's got his hands full right now. But this is before they started canceling school. It is, is an existing structure, it has some benefits. It's already up. It has power. It has bathrooms. It is a large space, two spaces, the main school and an annex building. And for, for sake of speed, my idea would be to acquire the property and then to utilize the annex building as quickly as possible. One, on a temporary basis for warming and like daytime community center use, drop in, people could hang out, get, be warm. But in order to have people stay there, we would need to have the build, have the building have a sprinkler system installed, which would add time. Cost is not that big of an issue. It's a, it's a rectangle building. It seems reasonably easy to run a sprinkler system in there. But like I said, it takes time. And then we could work towards building up at the, you know, the other building for different uses. What makes this attractive to me is that it can host a variety of different housing solutions. It's highly convertible. Classrooms are highly, highly convertible. It could be a solution. So we could have dormitory style or barrack style sheltering. And we could have more private settings, depending on how we split up the individual classrooms and/or other rooms. Another benefit to that, and this is, this goes for, well, a benefit to TA Wilson Academy is that there's built-in offices and built-in space to have onsite service providers. Onsite service providers and just, I would say, service providers in general are ready to assist with either direction we go. We've got good commitments. John Willis has been working with local nonprofits and service organizations to, to rally the support. So those are, those are the same. I wouldn't, there's no differentiation in my mind between which method we go with. The people who are ready to provide support are ready to provide support for us. One out of the box idea we had to quickly start to make a difference was to issue a request for proposals to the service world for X amount of dollars to provide, to match people who are needy homes to temporary housing situations in the investment and landlord community. Now, that has its own issues. There is a perception and a reality of a housing squeeze. Though there are some vacancies out in the landlord world right now. I've heard from at least two who've said they have some vacancies. It's not indicative that everybody has vacancies, but it's a lot different than what it was even a year ago where evictions were not able to happen and everyone was where they were based on either COVID circumstances or landlords just not being able to evict people. So the idea would be to fund a project. So we'd issue an RFP. And my recommendation would be issue an RFP to the service world and put $165,000 behind it. Allow, allow whoever wins the RFP to take a percentage for admin costs, just like we get with our CDBG funds. We get to pay ourselves to run programs. This would be very similar. And put out about $135,000 to put up, and this is just quick and dirty math. I estimated 30, 30 instances of $900 for living there, living in, in a place, apartment or room for four months with a fifth month added for like a security deposit. And then on top of that. Then on top of that, the idea was, that's good if you know of the space already and you have an existing relationship built up and you can just step right into it. But there is also the need for emergency sheltering. Not unlike what we've been doing the last couple of years, not we, but the people, organizations in the city have been doing the last couple of years by having emergency motel nights, either funded through a couple sources, John was, found a resource, United Way's found a resource. And the idea behind that is we can take somebody, say you have an emergent need, we need to get you off the street, we need to get you warm, we need to get you into the system. Let's get you settled for one to four days, and my idea was to have a four-day maximum on it so someone couldn't just say like, I don't like my roommate, I'm going over to stay at this homeless shelter and get a couple motel nights. So that they could be integrated into the system and then matriculate to a more, it's hard to say, a more, a less temporary, but still temporary housing solution. So, now, total allocation of about two hundred thousand dollars to do that. And then the other recommendation I have for you tonight would be to authorize us to continue to go down the TA Wilson Academy path to see if that building is actually viable. It'd be helpful for me to be able to make a recommendation, a full recommendation to you whether we should buy it or not, if we could perform a phase-one environmental assessment on the property and asbestos survey. So we can have a go or no-go and kind of hit that wicket. But, you know, after studying the issue and seeing where we can make the biggest differences and try to navigate the challenges that we have with both of them, because both aren't perfect solutions by any stretch of the imagination. But in my mind, doing something like this is a good mix of being able to address a problem head-on right away, work with some partners, and then also be able to develop a long-term strategy so that we're not continuing to deal with this on an emergency basis, year after year after year. But I don't, I get to research things, I get to implement what you guys decide, so I'm not married to anything, I can't stress that enough. I always want to make sure we find some alignment with the direction and vision that you were thinking so that I can go out and execute what you'd like to see done. And so that's where I am right now, I'm kind of stuck. Because I don't know, I don't have a good sense of what's palatable for you. I don't have a good sense of what kind of resources you want to put behind this for the specific thing. So that's why I wanted to talk about it tonight.
Can I start us off? After you?
No, after you.
Well, I meant after him. Well, first I want to say I really appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into researching these options because I do think that you did present some really good ideas here to at least kind of get us moving in the right direction. I'll start off with the pallet idea, I'm not in love with the pallet idea. I think it has merit in maybe certain situations, but just dealing with the coding issues with, I think the feel that it might give a sense of, I think, to the public and to the people that are living there might be a little less palatable. Yeah, I know, pun intended. I love the TA Wilson idea, I think it's a great use of property that exists that's not really being utilized. So there's already the footprint there, I think that that's a really great idea. But I know that winter is coming, Game of Thrones it up too. But winter is coming, and I think that this obviously isn't going to provide the quickest solution for people that are going to be needing this service. So I feel like the third option of trying to work with local nonprofits and organizations might be the best place to start so we can at least get these people through winter. But it's, at the same time, I think it would be good to do the environmental study and the asbestos, asbestos survey as well, just to kind of see if that's something we can move into after we get through winter. Those are just my thoughts.
What other comments do we have, counsel?
And then can you tell me where would these funds come from? Where would these?
So this would be the redirected American Rescue Plan funds from the transitional housing idea that we scrapped about a month ago now.
And how much is available there?
Right around to seven hundred and fifty thousand. There's also other ARPA dollars that we could go back to, I mean, you guys, you guys decide how to spend it. So there could be more, you could look at what's left at affordable housing allocation, say, hey, we want to pull a little bit of that back so we can do some of this. Or we could look at the full ARPA allocation ideas we have and say, hey, we're going to take from the wastewater plant project and shift it over here because we think it's strategically important.
Couldn't this be part of the Affordable Housing Commission's committee? I mean, shouldn't this be, it's because that was all about homelessness.
It could be, the reason it's not is because this was allocated separately initially and worked on separately. But we could send it back there, my fear is that I'd like to do something sooner rather than later. So that's why I wanted to talk about it, get some direction, because if we're going to go on a PAL path or TA Wilson path or some other idea that it's come up with, I want to start going after it.
So today I took, I was on a webinar. It was staff from C4 and members of various COCs, Continuum of Cares, Equitable Results Team. And they presented the quantitative and qualitative findings from the assessment phase of the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Project and that they're doing in partnership with the Michigan's Campaign to End Homelessness. So it was quite timely, I thought. And I asked at the end of it specifically, what I got from the session was that it's really important to have all the players in the same room, basically. So I kind of, I like the TA Wilson idea because we could get all the players in the same room. I think that's kind of what United Way was going for at the Ethos. In the Ethos 360, it was just too big of a building to do that, and I wasn't convinced we needed more homeless beds, so that's all part of the analysis. But, and I don't like the pallet idea because it minimize, I feel like it minimizes the value of the individual that would be living there. We, I know we've thrown out ideas on tiny homes and stuff like that, but the, whatever we do, these are people, and we need to treat them like people and help lift them from a lower place in life to a better place in life so that they can achieve more than what they're currently achieving. So whatever we do, I'd like to see that happen. The market is changing, the real estate market is changing because now landlords can evict, so I am hearing of landlords who have more vacancies. One thing I would like to, I'd like to hear from Angalita on, what does the wear shelter do? Don't the ladies, they're only allowed to be there thirty days, or can they stay there longer? Okay. This is obviously in your realm of things, but I, you know, one of the things that was thrown on the table was working with landlords. But from my experience, when government comes in and pays the rent for someone, the minute that money's used up, the landlord then has a new problem or has a problem. So we need to take all of that into consideration when coming up with the idea. But I love the idea of TA Wilson, I think it's a great building.
Yeah, I agree, I think the pallet idea, again, it's a, the structure, the design, but just the, just being able to move with that isn't quick enough to remedy the short-term problems that we have for housing people that are homeless and with winter, the cold weather. But yeah, just the idea of, I mean, they look like checks to me. So there is a dignity issue in my mind. But it could be that I'm not looking at the right, I looked at some as you were just talking, so I could be, my mind might be changed. But the idea of even tiny homes to me are, you know, we don't want to create communities where, you know, it's about dignity and long-term solutions for housing. But I agree, I think TA Wilson is a good potential solution. I know I've looked at it as a potential option for our agency. Not in serious, but enough to think that that might be a good solution for, I like the idea of private spaces for people. And I, so I feel like a combination of maybe the private placement and doing some research on the feasibility of TA Wilson as a more permanent solution.
Just to clarify, did, I sent a link to the pallet company last week.
I didn't, probably didn't see it.
Okay, they're sleek, they're well put together, I don't want to dispel any of that.
Okay.
Okay, because they're, as structures go that are temporary, the company put a lot of thought into it, and they appear quality construction.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back and look at your email.
I'll go ahead. I look at the pallet, looking at the layout and everything, I think it is, it's not as bad as it's come out said to be. You know, I heard some saying dignity and everything like that. Sleeping on sidewalks, sleeping underneath bridges, I think this is a step up. And I think the pallets, as I look at them, they are, they are insulated, they have heat, they have AC. These are temporary structures, it's not meant for someone to be there for very long times, transitioning. It's part of the transitioning program with the Resource Center and everything. So I just think it's not a bad idea. You know, I guess my biggest concern would be safety, not just with the individual standing, but those who are not homeless who might just come and try to harm. That's maybe one of my biggest, I guess, concerns. But I think, I know we want something, you know, quick, I don't know what can be quick. TA Wilson, I think, you know, long-term, I think that'd be great if we can get this done. I guess I'm thinking about, we talk about players, other people. What kind of skin in the game are they going to have, I mean, finance in the game are they going to have? I think there are companies out there, organizations that have, that have money, a lot of money. Are they going to put in, help out with this? I don't think if we did a million or whatever, we need more money to really get what we need over there. Talking about a daycare center, resource center, things like that. I just see, I guess for me, I would just like to know, I know we said we got a buy-in, but what's the buy-in? Is the buy-in just buying in, just having people there for resources? Or is the buy-in there also financially? Because I think there's, I believe there are some organizations that have more money than we have. And talking about the various location, the placement, we plan, I guess, getting with landlords, are we talking about vouchers?
I think you could look at it that way, but it'd be more of like, I would look at it based on some of the concerns I've heard, more of like an agreement that's between a service organization and a landlord to place somebody, so is it necessarily a voucher? Not really, but you could look at it that way.
Because I know vouchers, I don't think many, Laura can tell us, I don't think many landlords in the city take vouchers. I know like the housing choice, you know, they have like fifty-something vouchers.
Source of income is the protected class in the city of Jackson.
Oh, I know that, but there are some who are violating that.
Yeah, well, they, when I have, someone call me and they say they, so-and-so won't take Section 8, I always say they're, go back and tell them they're violating the law because they have to consider it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we hear that all the time. I'm not saying you, but I know there are some landlords who won't accept that, and they do discriminate, so. How do we deal with that? But, you know, I know, I know we're not making a decision tonight, we're just having a discussion. And just looking at, just looking at the parole service area, I'm looking at a homeless resource center, women's and children's shelter, family penthouse, and just, if we did Wilson, I guess who would be in charge, who would be running the shelter? Do we have somebody naming?
We, that's one of the things that we would need to develop as well. I think we've got a lot of people willing to step up and provide services. It'd be a matter of looking at one of them and saying, okay, who wants to be in charge of this?
Okay. I'm done. But I just, you know, the shelters, the pallet, they insulated, I don't know, it is an upgrade, it's a huge upgrade. You know, sleeping on sidewalks, sleeping underneath the bridge, that's a huge upgrade.
I'll go next, unless you want to go.
I don't have much to say, but to echo, you know, council member Nancy's comments there, dignity is something I think we need to think about, but I think a more pressing issue for the homeless population is the weather, and I don't think they care what something looks like if it's heated and it's fifteen degrees outside. So we got to do something, I think we got to do something quick. I'd also like to say too, you know, we voted against the particular house that was presented to us, the two hundred thousand dollar renovation for an eight-hundred-square-foot house, but are we throwing the baby out with the bathwater and not looking at other properties? You know, that particular project I was against personally, but I'm against the idea as a whole, not necessarily. I have no other properties out there, we could do that.
There could be, it was convenient because we owned it, so that was our rationale.
Do we own a bigger one?
We own a mansion on Wildwood, it would take a few million to fix up. But no.
Are you upset, Will?
Yeah.
I don't think the pallets are, you know, a bad idea. The timing, I didn't think about the timing when I looked at that to get from one point to the other and didn't realize the issues that that come along with that, you know, having to do an ordinance and then the building code. So those are things that we certainly could look at. And to be honest, my first mindset was a single building that's already up and standing. When I first heard about the pallets, my mind went to a building that we could redo, rebuild and set up one location for them. But the pallets will, could possibly do the same thing. So I'm a little torn, and I wanted to kind of wait until I heard others' comments. But, you know, being honest, that my first mind went to something such as a TA Wilson where they, we could house people there. And I'm not, as the city manager says, well, let me go on. And then the private, the landlords, if they've got openings and we can work out something to start getting people out of the cold, out of the weather, wherever we can get some results first, you know, it may not be a permanent thing, maybe a temporary thing, but whatever we can do to get people, you know, out of this weather and, you know, kind of work the other two and see where we, where we go with that. So, you know, I'm torn and I'm not married to any, any one of those, but for immediate access and giving people a place, things like the landlord's idea would work to get us started. We may not do, like I said, perm- We may not do, like I said, permanent. The TA Wilson is another opportunity, depending on the cost and all of the things that need to be done to get that ready to house people. But I also like the point of others helping in, in the project. Say we do TA Wilson, would other groups or organizations join in? And we have this collaborative thing within the city of Jackson from organizations in the city of Jackson coming together to, to make, you know, the homeless situation we have here in the city better. But, you know, all of those, I'm, I'm interested in where we figure out on all three. But like I said, the immediate need would be the first thing and maybe some of the landlords are ready and can house some of those people. And then we can find out what TA Wilson would be and if we can get other organizations and groups to go in. Not, we appreciate services too, I mean, I know some people will be providing services, but also in the investment side of redoing and rebuilding or whatever we, we have. Maybe some of our contractors would throw in a project or something, you know. So I'm, I'm open to all and certainly don't think that any of them are, are, are bad ideas, but I think we need to move a little quick and then take a look at the other options as well.
Okay, so, where do I start? I think I will work my way backwards and make some comments and ask some questions. So the private placement sounds like a good idea. However, my, my biggest question would be this. How do we determine what organization would handle that $165,000? Because saying RFP is one thing, but then deciding who actually handles that is another thing. My biggest concern with that idea is that we've literally had a citizen come in to our chambers and say, "I'm homeless, not because I don't have money, but because I cannot find housing here in Jackson." We have an entire affordable housing committee that is working on the fact that Jackson has a shortage of housing. There's a study that's been done that I, I don't know how many people have seen it that proves that there is a shortage in housing. We've heard it from people directly to me, this is, this is not a viable idea. It's a great idea, it just does not seem viable because if there was so many vacancies that we could just throw some money at some realtors, some landlords, to, to be able to place people, then I think we would, we wouldn't be even having this discussion because housing would be available. The other thing that I think we need to consider with this particular idea is, once someone's living somewhere, or even if they're just staying with you, once they begin to receive mail there, that is their home. So in four months, when we stop paying and then they use that fifth month because we got a security deposit, then the landlords have to do what? They have to literally evict these people that we've housed. And guess what? The eviction is not served on the tenant because the agreement is not with the tenant, the agreement is with the organization that placed them. First thing to think about, don't even need to answer, just want us to think about it. The idea on the existing structure, TA Wilson. You know, this sounds a whole lot like a project that I think the entire community was in uproar about. A project called the Ethnos Project. While the building may have been bigger, the, the concept is exactly the same. To take a structure that's already existing, that's not being used, and utilize it for housing and services, wraparound services. With this, my biggest question is who's gonna own that building? Because we're not in the business of running a homeless shelter. So at some point, we have to turn that building over to somebody to run it. And again, like has been mentioned a couple of times already, this is a long-term resolution. It is thirty-three degrees outside right now. Right now, tonight, it is thirty-three degrees outside. And the question that we've been asked for two months, what are we going to do about homelessness in Jackson as a city? What are we gonna do? It's been asked for two months, we've had two months to think about this. Two months. So with the pallet idea, this is a recommendation that I made. I don't know how many weeks it's been. To me, I, I feel like, and I just have to say, and I'm a little disappointed with the way the information has been presented. Because it talks more issues than it talks solutions with the pallet, solution. I really wish Pallet would have been able to present their project themselves. They don't charge to do presentations, they offered to do a presentation, at least to me. I'm not sure when staff took the meeting with them, if they said, hey, we would love to present to council so that they could actually get the details themselves. I sent a link to all the information from the presentation that I had, that the city manager and staff had as well, for council to take a look at because I wanted you guys to see firsthand the quality of the, so they've got two different structures like was talked about. The structure that's the thinner structure, because they come with both an AC and a installed heater and beds, this is something that, from what they told me, is not required for them to come out and do an installation for. They don't have to come out and build these. They can do a train-to-trainer, train our staff or volunteers on how to put them together. And they can be put together in a matter of hours, they come prefabricated. When I spoke to them, they said, "We've got 200 units on hand." I don't know if the thicker insulated structures are what's going to take a little bit longer, but what I do know is it is thirty-three degrees outside right now. Those units will heat, the thinner units with the heater will heat ninety degrees above whatever the outside temperature is. Ninety degrees above the outside temperature.
Hundred.
Excuse me, a hundred, right? So the thicker insulated ones, I recommend it to keep that heat inside so you don't have to run it as long, right? So I understand building codes, it, we, because I, I think out of ten phone calls that I get in a day, as mayor of the city, probably eight of those are people who are complaining about our building code or building code department, issues with trying to open and run a business here in the city. So I understand that being an issue. But I don't understand how something that we're trying to do as, as city council could possibly be an issue when it comes to codes. We are the legislators, we are the legislative body. While we can't totally scratch something that we just adopted, we can write provisions that would allow this to be able to happen if we wanted to. There's always a workaround for something if we want to do it, right? I think there's a way for us to provide a provision or a code that would allow this to be possible. So, I mean, and I, I understand if you, if you haven't looked at these units, the, the dignity perspective of like what this looks like. I think the concern is really more around, are we creating a, a tent city, right? Because I think the outside perspective is more of a concern than what a person who is currently sleeping, literally, probably right now, behind the Michigan Theater in the alley, when you cut between the alley of the Michigan Theater and that building where Waltz is at, and there's usually a person sleeping right back there. I, I think in thirty-three degree weather, they would much rather have a unit that they could go into, big enough for them to bring some of their belongings into and sleep warm for a night in this thirty-three degree weather that we have. In my opinion, all of these other options are gonna take more time than it would take for us to order these pallets, find a place that we could temporarily put them up, get some power to them because they said they could even be ran from a generator, and, and do something now. Because all of these other solutions, winter time is gonna be well over with before we even make a final vote on any of this. It doesn't make any sense to put this problem back on the Affordable Housing Commission when they already have issues that they're dealing with and, and this is something that needs immediate attention and a decision by us. Whether to act or not act is up to us because there's three options. And I think that even if you, if, if we had another discussion with Pallet to find out realistically, because what they told me is realistically, you could have the thirty units that you're talking about ordering up and running in less than two weeks with the right manpower. And we all know that we got plenty of people in this community who love to come together for a good cause. So in two weeks, what is the weather going to be like? It is thirty-three degrees out right now. It ain't gonna get, well, it's Michigan, I ain't gonna say it ain't gonna get no warmer because it could be seventy.
It's supposed to be in the forties next week, I'm watching it.
See what I'm saying? I don't, I don't even watch it because wait five minutes and it might change. But either way, we are getting closer and closer to our, our treacherously cold season. And we have not, we have not made a decision on a solution. So now we're, we're at the end of this discussion and now we sit and wait for two weeks before our next meeting, before we can have this discussion again and try to make a decision, which puts us probably another four to six weeks out from taking action. And it's thirty-three degrees outside right now.
Can I ask a question? Do we know how many people we're trying to help out of the cold?
Only anecdotally.
It's, it's a lot of different numbers floating around out there. I've asked, I've asked some of the people who are actively working in that, in that area, who are, you know, boots on the ground, actually out helping people, people like TJ. And I, I think, I think that there's probably two different numbers, right? There's, there's the number that, that we can potentially help and then there's the number that, hey, there's X amount of people who are homeless who are out there right now.
That won't take up.
And I, I think that, so, and when, when I asked, I asked that question, how many people do you realistically think are out there? And I got one person who told me about fifty, got one person who told me over a hundred. And then I said, okay, if we provided about thirty shelters and showed them this product, do you think this is something that would be helpful? Is the biggest question that I asked the people who are boots on the ground, involved and entrenched in the work. After looking at their website, every single person said this would be a great fit. This is an alternative option outside of what's offered in our community right now to help homelessness. And this would be something that would be helpful. Like every, I've not had anybody tell me that they don't think this would work. I did have one person say, "You're probably gonna run into some issue with the codes and ordinances." And that is the exact largest rock that we have to move in order for this to be a good solution.
To be clear, the only thing, only ordinance we would run into is our campground one, which is, you said, we can fix. The building code, you'd have to do something monumental, like say the city of Jackson's not going to use the Michigan building code. So that's just the difference.
Do we? I mean, is there not a way to literally like create a provision for emergency housing? Because the other thing I like about this, they're fully sanitizable. In the same way we can put them up, they can be taken down. So the same four-month window that we're talking about, they could be taken down, they could be stored. And then a longer-term location for them could be created. But the question is, can we put together a provision that allows us to have emergency winter housing in this fashion?
I'm, I'm looking with the eyes in the back of my head at the guy behind me.
Mr. Turner.
So there may be, under the authority granted to you under the Home Rule City Act for the, the general health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Jackson to potentially create an ordinance amendment to allow such a loophole. I, I can't guarantee that that wouldn't be met with some pushback in terms of the case law and your overall authority, but it's certainly something I can look into and, and brief the council on even before the next council meeting in terms of just sort of a white paper outlining what your authority is to basically circumvent your own ordinances to provide a benefit to the community. It's kind of a bit contrary to think of it that way, but that's exactly what you're doing. You're looking to basically waive the ordinances that are designed to protect the citizens in the interest of public health, safety and welfare to, in, in this instance, Mr. Mayor, create an opportunity to potentially pursue these pallets that could provide a temporary housing solution. So it's, it's something that needs to be explored further from a legal perspective.
So couldn't we look at a building like the Adams Hotel, which was already a rooming house of, at one point, and has bathroom facilities and has a roof over its head? And I, how many, I think it had twenty rooms or something like that, I could be wrong on the number of rooms.
But the Adams Hotel's been out of service for six months, which means it would fall under the new ordinances as well. So we run back into the same issue.
But those are our ordinances, those are not the state ordinance.
Ones we're trying to remove, so it would just speed up the rule process. I don't know, I'm, I see where, I know where you're going, pallets or where you want to see.
I, I just want to see something immediate, that's, I mean, that's it. If there's another, if there's another more immediate answer, I'm, I'm all ears. It's not that I'm like, hey, we gotta order these pallets, but I think to me, that is the most viable, immediate answer in the timeframe that we have to try to figure something out. But again, I'm, I'm all ears if there's another recommendation that someone thinks we could pull off in that timeframe.
I mean, in the spirit of urgency and the fact we're kind of spitballing here admittedly, I don't know if this is an option, but we keep talking about building something new or using somebody else's property. I mean, how much, how many cots would $165,000 get us that we could put in the Blue Center or the MLK Center or the Cortlandt Street Masonic Temple? And how much heat could we produce with that? I mean, at the end of the day, that's the immediate issue that we're facing right now is, is getting homeless people out of the cold while we try to find something more permanent.
Yep, and if we can pursue, if we can pursue the mayor's idea, we can pursue the mayor's idea with Matt's solution, we would, we would get around the need to have, to sprinkle a residential structure. So I like that creative thinking, something missed on me, a rule follower though, so, most of the time. So I'm glad you brought that up and Matt can look at it, because that, that's our limiting factor with a lot of these places. If you're gonna put someone in a place overnight, by the laws and rules we have to work with now, it has to have a sprinkler system. So if we can figure out a way to set that aside, any of those properties are usable.
So I think that the rules change when it's a historic building, don't they? I think the rules change a little bit when it's a historic building like the Masonic Temple.
I, you know, I don't know enough about that to speak with any authority.
Well, I looked at a historic building and for what we were gonna do with it, we didn't have to put in an elevator, we could use a lift and we didn't have to sprinkle it because it was a historic building.
Were you, were you using it for?
It would have been an event space.
The use is what matters. If you're gonna put people there and sleeping, it has to be sprinkled. That is from our, our chief building official. Now, if we want to do something that's, that sets aside those rules, that's, that's where we need to go. But like, talking about using an old building for a completely different use and saying it's the same, we're not gonna get anywhere with that, we're gonna be talking about what we need to make this happen, a different use doesn't go there.
Right, well, and then another option, couldn't you negotiate with one of the motels for four months to rent all of their rooms? Then each person has their own individual, my family is in this room, as opposed to co-sharing a bathroom.
We totally could.
So, and there's a lot, there's several motels and hotels out there. And if I, if I owned one, had the opportunity to have a guaranteed amount for four months and have all the rooms taken and I don't have to have staff, I don't have vacancies and I don't have to have the rooms changed and therefore I don't.
It's gonna run into a rate issue though, I mean, they, what they charge per day is gonna be. Run into a rate issue though, I mean, they, what they charge per day is gonna be much different than. Than thinking about it from the aspect of saying, we're gonna pay you uh a rate for for four months. And they're gonna look at what they can get per day versus what we're saying. For four months and then they're gonna average that out, well, what are they really saying they're gonna pay me per day? That that's not gonna equal out, I don't think, either that or we're gonna be spending a whole lot more money on hotel rooms over four months, paying the rate that they want us to pay.
What's the pallet cost? I can't remember, was it fourteen thousand?
Right around twelve thousand, we have a, I did get a proposal for their inch and a half insulated. And um to get thirty of them, they added tax, so I had to back that up, it's about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to get thirty of them.
And how many does thirty of them sleep?
I ideally, no, ideally, well, not ideally, in theory, there's places for two people to sleep. Would they always be occupied, given people's preferences or abilities to cohabitate with someone? Probably not, so it could be thirty, it could be forty-five.
Four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, is that what you said, right? And you're gonna get thirty of them, right? And then let's say they sleep two people, is that a fair average?
I mean, I's, I think that's too high.
I think that's too high, too.
One and a half? People?
So from from my conversation with the more uh the the units that have two beds are are truly designed for. If it's someone like a mother and a son or a child, right, or a father and a child. Not two uh separate adults.
Two unrelated adults, so one?
I I would say let's just average it at one, I mean, that according to what I've been told, that would fill a good portion of what the need is.
Okay, so that's fourteen thousand six hundred per person for four months, right? You're talking about putting them up, having them up for four months, taking them down? Or five months, what do you wanna call it?
I I guess the question, how to answer that is, it's gonna depend on where you're going, because we would own them. So then if if the problem arises next year. Then we'd put them right back up again.
Well, let's hope that we can go from our thirty-two percent low income to twenty-eight percent low income and keep lowering that down. But that's, let's say, four months, that's three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars per person per month.
Versus what?
Versus, I mean, I, versus, I can't ima- I mean, if I, I know that there's motels out there that charge thirty-five dollars a night. Because they don't get them full and so thirty-five, let's. Yeah, well, let's.
I think that's a more realistic number.
Thirty, so that, but even, all right, at fifty dollars for thirty days, that's fifteen hundred dollars. It's, it's, it would be cheaper to try a month.
Right, and then next year, if we have the same issue, then then what do you propose?
Well, there's no investment there, cause you're not owning any, you can still reuse the structures if you had them before.
And and again, to me, the the, the, the biggest thing in that I I really, and cause I don't, I don't um. I'm, I'm not um, I'm not here to sell their product, uh but they are. And I think that the if if the pallet idea is something of interest, then my recommendation would be to ask if they are available. To do a presentation for council so that way we can fire whatever questions at them we wanna fire at them. Uh, because again, this, to to me, the the biggest thing about this is those wraparound services. Uh, that is being proposed in like the TA Wilson idea or that's really necessary. To start trying to really deal with the issues that the people who are homeless actually have. Uh, is included in this whole concept, every other community, they end up doing also the community room building. Uh, and have at least an office where someone can provide those wraparound services that would be ne- necessary and needed. Uh, so I think to me, while, wh- wh- when I said, hey, we could put this up somewhere for four months. The part that that I think you didn't hear was, and then figure out where it would be best suited for a long-term solution. Because this isn't something that I see us investing in and then just taking down after four months. The need is 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 emergent because we're going into winter right now. And we know we've got about a four-month window that is going to be thirty-three degrees outside. After this season is over, then we could figure out where to move the site, where it could be on a more long-term basis. Um, and then figure out who could run the site on a long-term basis. Uh, to me, I'm just trying to figure out what can we do now? To get people out of the cold in thirty-three degrees. And the 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 other thing um that I really appreciated about this, and again, I I I. I always say this, I ain't scared to say it, that I was homeless myself. Then after being homeless, my mother worked at the homeless shelter for almost twenty years uh and and ran it for a long time. I know a lot of these people who are chronically homeless, who were homeless when I stayed there, who are homeless right now. Some of those individuals who are chronically homeless, they choose to be homeless because they don't wanna be housed with someone else. They have issues like schizophrenia that makes them feel nervous around being around a bunch of people. So we may not even be solving for those individuals if we have just another big shelter type. Establishment that we invest in versus this gives someone the dignity of privacy. Because it is designed for one person or two people, a mother and a child, father and a child. Or one individual, where we see people all over our city with their belongings usually closest to them. Because it's the only thing they have, when you go into a a shelter, a lot of times, they don't let you take all of those belongings in there with you for fear of. Bedbugs or other types of issues, they don't usually let you take a lot of stuff in there with you. This gives that person the dignity and opportunity to have somewhere, you can stay here and your belongings can be here with you. Uh, so I I I think ultimately, what I would recommend, if the if the interest is there to hear more about it. Would really be to reach out to Pallett and ask if they would do a presentation for council so you can hear firsthand and ask firsthand. The questions that you have about this being a potential solution.
So I have a couple of questions, so where would these be located immediately?
There's um a couple of areas we've identified in the city. Um, we, they need to be in relatively flat surfaces and um there, I think there's some opportunities. To to think smartly about where they could go, the first idea we had was Nixon Park. Um, there's paved area there, it's not the most level, but we could do something like open up the building for people to use the facilities. So thereby not having to get a bathhouse right away. Um, another idea, um, cause it's more secluded and speaking with Pallett, a lot of times in communities, these are in industrial zones. Um, Best Field um could be another one, it's uh situated. Um, it's fenced in on at least two sides, or three sides if you count the street, and there's a garage facility there. Best Field. It's caused from elm plating, um, trying to think of the the.
What are the horseshoes?
Mitchell.
Mitchell, yeah, um, is an opportunity, it's secluded, uh, I don't think it would attract attention. Cause I too would be worried about nefarious people, I'm not worried about. People in the community, in that community causing too many problems, I'm worried about people thinking it's hilarious to go in and make trouble for them. And so having it be secluded and having it on city property over there, I think would be another ideal solution. Um, and then we could always, I mean, another partnership would be to look at anyone else who owns some big property and big parking lot, might be underutilized in industrial zone. But those are the two places that came to my mind first.
Um, and then the second question is, uh, so who would determine who gets to live in those spaces?
Again, that would have to, we'd have to partner with a provider who's in tune with that, we're looking to provide capacity. As far as like the management of it, it'd have to be a partnership.
Is our next council meeting on the twenty-ninth? Well, I'd make a motion to direct staff to bring to our next city council meeting unless. Somebody felt we needed to meet sooner in a special meeting. Hardcore options and ask Pallett to come and do a presentation. And ask anyone else that you come up with that may need to do a presentation to do one at the same time. All regarding the homelessness issue. So in other words, no fashion show, just homelessness.
Weird, but okay.
I was trying to think of something.
And could that possibly include the um hotels or motels too, is that what we're?
Yeah, that's my thought, you know, come back with, could we get a hotel, what would the cost be? Could you do something with the Adams Hotel, could you do something with any other buildings that are out there that are vacant? Can you get with um Landlords Association, I know the president, um Chuck Drake had said that. He was interested in uh working on the temporary need process. Um, getting landlords together that would be willing to participate in such a program and including. An education uh process in that. Um, I do know that units are opening up a large landlord that I uh just told me. He has twelve empty properties and he can't. He can't get to them to get them ready for rental because of the city inspections, but that's a different issue. So there are properties out there that are available to rent, whether that person would participate in a program like this, I have no idea. But um I also know that there's other properties that could be purchased.
And then would we also look at the option of putting cots somewhere? Is that another?
So, like I said, so long as we can figure out a way to unlock some of the things that constrain us, yeah.
So is that a viable, is that an interest, is that, I mean, I think.
And you're saying you have to have a sprinkler system and you have anyone sleeping overnight?
Yeah, so we would just need to figure out the way around that with the mayor's idea and see if Matt could pull that off.
So if a school has a twenty-four, I mean, don't they do these twenty-four hour things, they don't have to have a?
There's no one sleeping.
Oh, I'd be sleeping, but.
Trust me, the way I, the way I presented it to Brian was like, hey, we're gonna call this a community center and like a drop-in place, so. We don't need to sprinkle it, right, like, well, people are gonna sleep there, well, I mean, they might fall asleep, but uh, you know, just trying to think of ways to use the existing rules. To our favor, didn't think to say, let's set aside those things.
Well, and can you get a cost on a sprinkler system?
Yeah, those are easy, yeah.
Right, and they may not take that long to install, especially in a simple, yeah, if it's an easy building. I mean, part of that is the water that goes to the building.
On some level, the mayor Mahoney's point, you know, who who makes the rules and who enforces them, and why is this so hard? I feel like there's kind of a failure of imagination here, too.
That's why I wanted to talk about it, it was like, I'm I'm running into people saying, hey, we can't do this, we gotta think of it this way, I'm like, well, is there or is there another way to look at it? So trying to share the pain a little bit, so get better ideas and more ideas.
Would it, while doing all this, while working on all this stuff for the next meeting, would it behoove us to invite some of the community partners? To this meeting who might have additional ideas or would people to provide additional input to these ideas that were being presented?
Um, I mean, it's hard for them, it's hard for them to participate in this discussion right now, cause we're doing formal business.
Right.
Could ask them to to reach out and beforehand and share concerns, share ideas.
Even if they just came to public comment, like even if they just, like invite them, let them know that we're gonna be discussing this and they can, you know, share any opinions that they have.
You know, um. I keep thinking back, I know the mayor brought it up. Like I said, there was an opportunity for this, a project like this to happen. And all the players, all the organizations, I mean, almost everyone said no. They said no because of Kento, I know the idea that it comes from Portland was a, they wanna um emulate what Portland, Auckland was doing. But everyone said no, I noticed it was a bigger building and everything, everyone said no. Everyone said no, they didn't wanna do it, they thought it was gonna entrench on what they're doing, what's gonna stop them what they're doing. You know, resource center, training, job training, everything, what what's there? Maybe cause it's on a smaller uh. Place now with 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 the Wilson, they may say, yeah, uh, look into it now, but um, I I just. The issue still is still there, when 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 they talked about the project, a couple of years ago, the issue was there, it was just as big then as it is now. I guess I'm kinda skeptical of the um. Of the 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 ones, the organizations out there, some of them, not all of them, just some of them. You know, I feel them, I see them as being hypocritical to what we're trying to do, to what was trying to been done, we're trying to, it was trying to do then. You know, I go back and say, it was Kento and then also they had issues with, at the time, the mayor Derek Dobie. They had issues with that, but you know, the situation is still the same, has nothing changed, not one thing changed, not one thing. So, that's me.
Well, the um, from the meeting I was in today, they did say that um, one of the barriers that the homeless people. That they interviewed um had was, they had no one person to see you through to the end. So they felt, they kept getting bounced around to people and the other one was the um, the quality of housing. That there wasn't, that that it was, it wasn't dignified, so those were the two things. That. Were mentioned strongly, whether that helps or not, I have no idea.
So I don't, I don't recall there being a a second on the motion that that Laura made, I just wanted to just. Cover that again before we get too far off in the comments.
I'll second it.
Okay, so there's, there's a motion with a second now. I think we had discussion already.
You're afraid, aren't you?
I ain't never scared. Um, so uh, is there any further discussion though, seriously? Um, I think this is an important topic, so I don't want anybody to feel like I'm rushing it, um, but I do think that uh, that. You know, we had a motion to consider at this point, unless anybody wants to to consider, uh, you know, making an amendment or a recommendation. There's a mo- motion and a second on the floor, is there any questions on that motion?
So I would just ask if if that's gonna give staff enough time to gather all that information.
We will, we will meet that, we will meet the deadline.
Okay.
I would have only given them a week, so I think we have lucky to have two.
Vice Mayor, did you have something? Okay, um, all minds clear on the motion. Okay, Clerk McTally, display the vote. All right. Okay, um, council member comments. Let's start with Council Member Laura Schleck.
Um, can we ask, um. I had, I got a little bit of a headache, um, Aaron Demick to maybe do a little article about taxes and what are, what. Our millage or what the millage covers.
Oh, yeah.
Um, to make it clear, cause we don't have a millage that goes towards roads. And then um, I wanted to find out from um, Madam Clerk, how the polling locate, the new polling locations were coming. Cause I did talk with somebody from Bishop Combs Church that had said they hadn't heard, he hadn't heard from anybody. So maybe there.
So, the Election Commission is going to be meeting next month to come up with recommendations for council to consider. There's actually several things that we will be presenting to council. Probably in mid to mid-January, early February for consideration. In terms of polling locations, alternate polling locations, um, some information on the proposal that passed. Twenty-two-two, um, that affects elections significantly, so all of that will be brought before council. Um that affects elections significantly, so all of that will be brought before council probably the second meeting of January or the first meeting of February after the Election Commission meets.
Um, yeah, I had several people complain about finding their locations. And then when I went to my location to vote, I was concerned about uh I was concerned about Freddie's Ward and their ability to vote because they've got Cooper Street dividing them and is it gonna be difficult for the people who live um over on the west side of Freddie's Ward to get over to the booze center and to vote and so on and so forth, so. Uh anyhow, I'll be anxious to hear what you have to say. And speaking of elections, I want to congratulate Mr. Willis. Win the county and district eight, or is it district eight or seven? Seven, district seven are lucky to have you representing them. Um and I want to thank Mike Osborne and his crew for all the hard work they're doing on leaf pickup because it's been a tough.
Tough fall. He's already left, but tough fall.
He's picking up leaves.
He's picking up leaves, boy, I'll tell you what. I see those piles and my heart goes out to him on that. And um and then I wondered when we were gonna get the housing study. Are you gonna do a presentation? Are you gonna email it out to people?
I already emailed out to you guys.
I didn't get it.
Okay, let me mail it again.
Okay, I am having a little bit of email problems, so. Glad I asked. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Council member Karen Benau.
Um, not much from me. Um I'm I'm really glad, I I didn't realize that we were gonna talk about housing as long as we did, but I'm really glad that we did um go through that pretty, pretty um get a good in-depth uh discussion on that. And I'm I'm hopeful to see some solutions uh for our homeless population. Um, other than that, I just want to thank, obviously Laura already mentioned it. I also want to thank Mike and his crew with DPW, um just because I know that leaf pickup is crazy and I know that they're gonna be gearing up for snow removal. Um so I I do want to thank them as well, as well as the rest of our staff. And uh happy early Thanksgiving to everybody.
Council member Big Will.
Thanks. Um so it's, as Council member Dan saying yourself, mentioned, it's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, I do I think it bears repeating, I do want to reiterate it, you know, with the benefit of hindsight, looking back to when I was speaking with Kenton and United Way reps about their plan. I think I personally screwed up in, you know, not not backing it as much as I could have, you know, back then. When they presented their their plan to uh to us and and me, I thought it was a great idea. I asked them what the catch was. The catch was they needed two million dollars. And now we sit here saying, okay, we're gonna spend half of that on something a year later. Um and I can't help but feel like I dropped the ball on that, so I do want to apologize for that and I'm sorry. I think, uh you know, in hindsight, being what it is, I think that was probably a pretty good option. But I don't want to dwell on that too much. I do want to move forward and come up with a with a solution. And and to Mayor Mahoney's point, a solution that um, you know, maybe gets creative, maybe bends the rules a little bit, but at the end of the day, helps people. I think that's what we're here to do. I think that's what we need to do. And uh that's, that's everything for me.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I too, uh-huh. I'm hoping that we can come up with information and and find a solution to help the people that are homeless in our in our city. So I'll be looking forward to um all the information that may, will come back to us for the next meeting. Um I want to say congratulations to John publicly. I've given him my congrats when I saw him uh last week. Um and then I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Um, don't eat too much.
Eastside.
Eastside.
Oh, shoot.
So, uh, yeah, I know you do. At first, I'd just like to thank um the clerk and uh staff and the volunteers for the job they did during the election night. I mean, um, I haven't said it before, um they do an outstanding job. Um with what they have to do with the long hours, start early, stay late. Uh make sure everything's counted. But I'd just like to just give a, just thank them for everything they do. Every every election they do the best they can, and I think they do a real good job. You know, uh you, and we have talked, clerk and I, about uh, you know, how can we get more people interested in volunteering for that day? Because, you know, they are, how can I say this? Get a little long in the two. So they are, you know, they're getting up there, and I know they have a lot of experience, but um they can't be there all the time. So hopefully, we can figure out a way, trying to, uh I know it's hard for college students because, you know, they have to have classes, probably have classes that day, but maybe we can look at another, another route we could go about, looking at trying to get more people volunteering uh to work the the polling stations and um regardless, Democrat, Republican, Independent, we just need more people involved in this and um because I mean, it's just, it's a huge need. Um, good conversation. I appreciate it. Um I'm sure we will figure out something immediately. But I go back, uh we had an opportunity, well, immediately back then. Uh but no one did want it. Yeah, let me stop, leave that alone. Uh happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving. Eat all the turkey, duck, all the vegan, whatever you want to eat. Have fun. Have fun. Say me some.
Council member Angelita.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to have uh such a lively discussion on on this issue uh publicly, so um thank you for bringing that forward. I appreciate Jonathan, your uh thorough presentation or writing it all up so that we could, we had something to react to and respond to. Um and yeah, I'm looking forward to coming up with some solutions at the next meeting.
Um, thank you. I would just ask council, um as we uh depart from each other um to our warm homes, to consider the fact that it is thirty-three degrees outside. Um and not all of us in our community that we are charged to um legislate for, uh have a warm home to to go to. Um, uh as we enter into the holiday season, um definitely uh each or fill. But if you have some leftovers or some space at your table, consider individuals who have both lost family members uh and do not have family to spend this time with. Um and I just want to say that I am thankful. I'm trying to stay in the Thanksgiving spirit. Um and uh always try to make my children tell us uh what they thankful for uh in this season. And the thing that I'm thankful for uh is having the opportunity to serve this community. Uh and I truly mean that, like I, I don't take uh the work lightly uh by any means. I'm glad to be serving and thankful to be serving with um everyone who's sitting up here, uh both uh elected and staff. Uh to be serving at this time because I think we're in an opportunity right now uh to really make a huge impact in a lot of different ways in the community. Uh I'm almost a year old sitting up here. Um so I'm reflecting back over this last year of accomplishments and things that we've been able to uh to do over this year. And again, uh I started with saying that I'm happy to serve with you guys. Um and I can still confidently say uh that I'm happy to serve with you guys, even even when we ask a whole bunch of questions. I like the questions. Um, definitely uh want to say uh congratulations um to uh Commissioner. I I gotta change his name in my phone uh to say Commissioner Willis, uh who will be represented across the street. Uh it will be nice um to have one more person across the street uh that I can get along with. Uh so congratulations. Uh I know it is, uh it's very well deserved. Uh and I know that you will serve uh the seventh district well. Uh when I told my predecessor um that I would be leaving uh the seventh district to pursue running for mayor, the first question that I was asked was, uh she she didn't even celebrate for a long time. She was like, okay, that's good. Who are you gonna find to take your seat? Um so I knew that was a duty of mine uh right off the back, and it's something that was heavy in my mind from the day that I left. So when you announced that you were running, uh I instantly had a comfort that the seat would be returned to someone who uh absolutely represents the interests of the citizens in that district. So again, congratulations. Uh thank you to staff and uh thank you to our citizens who stuck it out for this conversation that we had. Uh and with that, uh Mr. City Manager.
Just a couple of things. Last meeting, I attempted to thank a DPW member named Devon Swift. And I thanked him if his name was Devon Smith. So Devon, who I know was watching and was so polite the next morning when he said, hey, man, Devon Smith, who's that? Devon Swift, thank you. I appreciate you, so does the clerk. I want to get that right, Devon Swift. I know that too, I was just too nervous. Um hopefully you all saw a new lobby display uh as you came in the building today. That was a project um taken up by Aaron Dimick, our PIO. Um so it won't have to replace our static nineteen-seventies display anymore. And Aaron will be exploring the, all the possibilities with that um electronic display. And then also, um I'd like to thank Aaron again, um and JTV for the many upgrades they've made to the video and audio system in council meetings. Um that is now completely finished. And I know our viewers at home are enjoying a better experience, and here we're enjoying a better experience as well. I think the TVs work out pretty nice for presentations. And then um wanted to have a moment of silence for the old way of doing things. Um agenda packets um being created in Word and then Adobe and then email to you guys, and then do you have the right program to open it? Those will all go away hopefully with the next meeting packet. We're moving to a a platform called Board Docs um that wanted to get to before now. But uh hopefully, like I said, we can get this done by the next meeting and it will make everyone's lives easier.
Yes, you will.
Viewing them and putting them together. So be ready for that. That's all.
Agreed. Agreed. Uh at this time, we will.
Come on.
West Side agrees.
Been moved, and the West Side agreed. Uh so at this time, all in favor?